One of the things that I seen when I was young is I had a lot of issues. My real mom died of drug overdose when I was really young, when I was about two years old. My dad was a better alcoholic until the age I was 28 years old. So he wasn't in the picture. My stepmom, the most quietest lady with the most beautiful blue eyes, took that lead and made me what I am today. She said, she told me, she says, "Don't look at the color of the skin, look at their actions and what they do and how they present themselves." So for me, that is still what I wanted to accomplish. And keep in mind, when I was young, I had so many deficiencies because of drug use. I had to go through so much therapy when I was young. A lot of teachers said, "You know, Francisco, you're not going to be anything because you can't quantify how to speak. You can't understand, you know, I couldn't read, I couldn't write, I couldn't spell. I was a special ed, I was an RSP." They counted me out, but my mom said, "You have to work 10 times harder to get what you want in life. Nothing's given to you whatsoever." So I took that to heart and I tried and I tried. At the age of eight, they gave me a disability check because they said, "You're not educated enough. You're not going to be able to do nothing in life." But my mom, she stated, once again, "You're going to have to work 10 times harder." I said, "Okay, I'm going to work 10 times harder." Sure enough, at the age of 12, I would say, I had to go through a lot of different changes. I actually had to take a valuation because I used to go to King's View for my issues. I had to take a valuation by Salya, California. They wanted to take a proficiency test and see how was my IQ was here or wasn't here, whatever the situation may be. And I took it. I was so smart that I was done because I lost an $80 check a month, which I was glad. So in that process, I knew my value at that time. So I studied audiobooks, I studied video books, I studied whatever I could study. I grabbed my hands and I got it done. And I got my education despite all these issues. And I said to myself, "Okay, I'm working 10 times harder and I'm going to try even harder." So, the same time I was going to high school, I was going to college at the same time. I graduated a year ahead of my class and I graduated from college, but the problem was issues at college. So I said, "Okay, dang, I got my degree sort of, but now it's uncredited, so it's me." So I went back to college. So I was going to do another four years of college. And the funny thing is, I actually worked with Monty Payton, Travis's brother. I was at West Coast College. So I studied there for a while. And I was thinking to myself, "Man, I'm a computer engineer, I have this certification, I don't have any more, so I'm going to redo it." Then I was like, "Man, another four years?" No. So I went again and went to Newer Rising Technology in Fresno. Got my A+ certification, my M+ certification, MCMP, C++. You name it, I probably have an A+ certification before in different fields. But that wasn't the chronic achievement in my life. The chronic achievement in my life was my beautiful family, my beautiful wife. I've been married for 21 years. I have two beautiful daughters. My oldest is going to be 21, my youngest is going to be 18. Okay? Those are the reasons why I'm here right now. Because I want to make sure that we have an impact that's lasting, that's going to be for future generations, for everyone. So that's a little bit about my life. Fun fact, I actually was on a city council, but it was called Community Search Board, the Mayor of California. And we talked about water. I fixed water issues while I was there. I fixed, there was a lot of arcing levels there. We talked about water. And when we parted that, we're digging a well for their community, for my community at that time. We got that done. And so, by the way, if you ever go on Wikipedia, the Mayor of California, you'll see their logo. I actually exactly, I actually exactly like Haver's. Just saying, just saying, because that's how much I love this community. Now that being said, I want to go over and tell you what not I accomplished, we accomplished as a council when I was there. You know, we always have to look, I always say, "Be proactive instead of reactive." You save a lot more money than we trust you. So, I looked at it, I was thinking, "Okay, what can we do in order to make sure our economy is good in this uncertain times? Too many uncertain times. We don't know, you know, how our economy is going to drop, go sideways, whatever." So, the council, someone on here, the council, as a body, we approved to make sure we have a balanced budget each and every year. That's fiscal responsibility. And we also make sure that during the crisis, we set aside reserve operational funds, emergency funds. So my other cities and other communities have sunset clauses where, a sunset clause is basically, they wait 10 years, five years, they get approved for public safety, but after the 15 years, they have to reapply. And a lot of cities within the next two years are going to have to reapply. And a lot of citizens are going to support that because of the way the economy is. And people ask me, "Well, gentlemen, Mr. Payton came up and stated not a fact. He stated that nobody was a support public safety in Haver because of chaos in the city. Chaos in the city." That is completely wrong. I urge you to check yourself. Right now, the only county that was approved, the only county that was approved to pass a tax through the county was the city of Haver. Because the community buying right now. There's community buying. And I'm going to speak to the fact, do I support a public safety tax on my bottom record? No. But if it's a community initiative, that they want to do it, I will support it. Also, I don't give them oversight. So if the community wants to support it and the community wants to buy into it, the community should have a board that sees where that money goes. That's called transparency and that's called accountability for your guys' money. Now, the other thing was, we were the first, one of the first, to create a safety art, which is awesome, Parks Resource Officer. What does that mean? Parks Resource Officer. So Parks Resource Officer, which by the way, it takes a team. Brad Albert, Parks Director, Arby Lee Sheen, Parks Service. I just wanted to be truthful, I didn't want to parlay it at that time. But they took it to the next level. They said, "Let's have a Parks Resource Officer." They came together and they excited us. With a Parks Resource Officer, they're allowed to rescue them. But that's not the issue, that's not the campaign. They're allowed to help people. I don't believe, every time that I talk, I said, "Not a handout, but a hand up." So when you're talking about the issues, Parker has told me multiple times, "There's a gentleman. He wants to go back to his house, he wants to go back to his home and he can't because he doesn't have the resources." Parker says, "How can we help him? How can we help him?" He says, "Well, give me a ticket, you guys, I'll be out here." They did. I'm going to, I'm going to pinpoint where Amanda is doing so much with me on meeting a fight against the young house. Because what we're doing, what we're thinking is outside the box. And Mayor Morrow's thinking the same way. We're thinking outside the box where there's a place in Matika where you're, as soon as you get in there, it says Life Coach. By the way, I love my official speed. It says Life Coach. And they go in there, they get assessed, "How can we help you?" And then, they got clothing, they got shelter for their animals, they got shelter for their stuff, getting almost their own with their car, right? And they don't want to leave their animals' way because that's their only, that's their only friend most of the time. So they want to keep them with them. And they're not going to leave them out there by themselves. So with this program, it shows every different mission of helping that individual to say, "Hey, I have something. I have to be proud of myself." They have a place where they can think about, they have a place where they can be human again. And that program has been almost 76% success rate. Actually, most of them come back and work for that program. That's how we fixed these issues. We don't give a handout, we give a handup. So, the other thing is, is that when I became the mayor, we had a $1.2 million deficit. $1.2 million deficit. I was like, "Okay, this is going to be fun. You know, I'm going to have to deal with all this stuff." But what I say, "We have to be proactive instead of reactive." So I looked, when I was a part of the cost of negotiations, initially I didn't agree with the cost of issue because there was something on the table I can't speak about that I didn't agree with. Then when we sat down at the table, we approved it. And I'm so happy because a lot of you guys bought a lot of toilet paper, there's none of them. So, we did so many great things with that money, but it's accountable for that money and for those actions. Now, the other thing is, with help of our mayor, is, how many of you own businesses here? How many you own a business? Okay. You shouldn't be dictated by the government or the local level or the state level or the federal on how to run your business. Because I'm going to tell you what, if you do that, logically, if you don't know how to run your business, guess what? You don't even know how to make more money for the town tax. So I'm going to give you all the tools to make more money for the city of Haver, for our community. That's how you do it. You don't put regulation after regulation on people. And so, with the help of our mayor and our city council, we have reduced regulation. We got rid of zoning in some areas that have been, I had to say, monopolized for such a long time. And in that process, now we're going to see Costco with automotives, we're going to see Walmart with automotives, we're going to see more sales in our community and our tax base. And I'm looking to the future too. I said, "Proactive instead of reactive." I know in the next 15 years, Carvana is going to take over. People don't realize, when Carvana takes over, you're not going to handle, yes, our dealership. No, our dealership. So you're going to reduce our tax base. So we have to have another implementation in place to offset that. That being in the future. Now, we've done so much with our parks and recreation and with our team. When I was mayor, we looked at every sector of our parks. Because I believe families love parks and families create parks and memories, memories of parks. And in that process, we invested, we invested in the Longfield Center, redeveloped the building. We invested in Centennial Park. We invested in Hidden Valley Park. We've been investing in all of our parks. Because once again, I believe is that when you talk about a specific issue of nothing being done, nobody cares. But I guarantee you, if you invest in the park or you invest in the community, they will invest in themselves. I guarantee you that. Now, one of the things that we're going to talk about is I believe local control. And I know our captain, I know Amanda, Saltrey, I know Police Morrow believes in local control. It's high time that the governor dictates to us, well, we have to have four trash bins, four trash bins that we have to pay for. And he doesn't give us the money to even implement those programs. So in the process, guess what we have to do? We have to raise rates to justify that cost for that waste, new waste, the green waste, the purple waste, the white waste, whatever, whatever trash waste we have. And that's not a kind of belief at a government level. He should give us the money to do that. So we're right now, we're creating a coalition of black minded vehicles such as Adam Akkington for the City of Llana. Adam? So, you think of city council. We even want to create a coalition that are going to go to Sacramento, talk about the issues that we're listening to and we're going to fight. Because I'm telling you, nobody has fought it in a long time and now we're going to fight. Now, that being said, my last thing is that seven years ago, I had a vision for a small ice creamery, a small ice creamery. And I said, "Ah, shoot." Captain at that time didn't want to do it. I said, "Okay." So, all of this is around and said, "You know, that's a dumb idea, it's not going to work." I'm like, "Let's just try." No, we're not going to do it. So, this council, they have that vision, they see the same vision. Our Parks Director, our staff, our city manager is in that same vision and it was executed to a team. Now those same people say, "Hey, Francisco, are you going to do the game here?" "Yeah." "Oh, okay, cool." So in that process, there, that's community buying, that's how you do it. They see that vision, they made a lot of money and they're happy. And in the process, it wasn't an awesome dream at the time, after the time, it happened to be all about together and it was a beautiful thing. I heard, point blank, it was a hallmark moment for the city of Haver. They loved it. Now, I'm going to give you that fact, my main goal is to, my main goal is to get to talk to, to understand your issues and hopefully I'll give you an answer, the right answer. Thank you very much.
All right, Francisco, we're going to open it up to two questions and answer all, get my two questions first. My first question is, what is your position on the proposed roundabouts? I know they're big, part of a bigger downtown beautification, but specifically speaking about roundabouts and what it's going to cost to put them in. What is your position?
Once again, my vision is to help the community. There's no set one right answer, the right answer, the wrong answer. You know, if we go one way, we can do the stoplights, we're going to save about maybe, I think $60,000. Uh, $20,000? $20,000. So, is that the right way? I don't know. But for me, if it makes sense, economically makes sense, then I'll support it. But, here's a caveat. It has to economically make sense, it has to be viable for our downtown. Because if we do not improve our downtown in some form or factor or shape, we're going to be like Reno for the next 20, 30 years. Do I want to see that? No. Do I say, "No, I don't want to completely answer you?" No. But if it makes sense, and I'm looking, actually, I'm looking at the preliminary video drawing, that's not bad. Do I think it's my cup of tea? It's so weird. I would say, I'm looking at the council prior to, like, "What were you thinking?" And I'm thinking to myself, "What am I thinking?" So I don't know. I would support it if it makes sense. If it makes sense, I'll do it. But you guys got to come out, you guys got to look at it because ultimately, we're all going to be affected by the outcome.
All right, my next question's, a problem not just the city of Haver's having, but most of California is a homeless problem. Now, you talked about a program that Matika's running, is that correct?
Right.
Now, is there a reason why the city of Haver hasn't got with Matika implemented a similar program? If the program were currently, the trajectory we're on, our homeless population is not dropping.
Right.
Why haven't we not tried something different?
See, and that's the thing, it gives vision. I think this council has vision, the prior council, I can't speak for them at that time, but there was no vision. And when they had a vision, they wanted to put it in our downtown. And what we do when you put something in downtown that's a homeless shelter? I hate to say it, infects the businesses, infects areas. So we got to be logical and smart of where we want to put it. For me, I would love to see the old COS building. I think that would be, I think that would be great. And it gets logical because what you got to do is take all the systems. I lived on the car bus, uh, board. I would say, we communicate with car, we communicate with the location of that individual building and when you make it where it's easy, readily available. The problem is, most times, there is been no communication with different divisions of different boards. And this council, I can truly say, takes that issue and talks with these different boards and it's been working. And we started to see that progress. Because I'm going to tell you right now, in the past five years, we didn't have the suggestion to get to this point. And I guarantee you, if the right people are in city council, we're going to fix this issue. And it's not about, once again, it's not about housing the homeless. It's not. Because what you're creating is creating environment for more homeless. Which is what it's about, it's about giving people the right medicine when they need it. I know so many people are out there that if they have a place to take their medicine, they would be gentle giants who never have an issue. Or the services. I know so many, the city of Matika did a brilliant job where they have all the services at a remote location. So they got all the information and guidance for them to be veterans, whatever it may be, at that one location. That's how you solve the problem.
Good answer. I definitely think we need to do something because like I said, our current program is probably not fruitful. But I'm glad that you're thinking about that. I'm going to open the questions up to the audience. Again, reminder that the questions should be directed at for the city council member and not the city council. It's not a city council meeting, so just be respectful of that. Questions? Hands? All right.
Thank you.
Francisco, you talked about planning for the future and you talked about Carvana being the future. Just so you understand, the sales tax on vehicle purchases, that won't affect the city because if you live in Haver, you buy a car in San Francisco, you pay 7.25%. That sales tax on vehicle purchases always go back to the county.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to make sure you understand.
That is right.
You will not lose the sales tax because someone comes from San Francisco here, they don't pay the 7.25%. They pay the sales tax based on.
You're absolutely right, I'm talking about the local area. Right now, but you're absolutely right, 100%.
Steven, are you for Carvana or against? I'm just kidding. Uh, questions? All right, I'm going to catch you.
But I'm elaborating that in a minute.
You go ahead, Francisco.
Oh, because one of the things that I fought for and hopefully you get it, because things change. And you're right, but things change. So for example, I fought about four years, I told everybody, I said, "I'm proactive instead of reactive," right? And I said, "Let's go ahead and look at Amazon." I'm telling you, Amazon is going to take over a lot of sectors and that money is staying in that region. And sure enough, that tax money, they did not reach it because the bylaws of that city stated that. So anything can change with that type of money. If the bylaws change it, it's going to happen. And when I fought, when a person tells you to 93230, where should that money go to? The city of Haver, our community. And with Amazon, it hasn't. Only at the service station where the package is shipped is where that money goes. And that can happen in any sector right now.
I'd like to go back to the question on the roundabouts.
You got it.
You said, you didn't really come out and tell us exactly where you stood on.
True, sorry.
You said, "When it makes sense." Well, when is it going to make sense to you?
I'll tell you, when you guys go out there and actually look at the roundabout video when it's coming, you tell me. You let me know, if you think it makes sense, then I'll support it. If you don't think it makes sense, then I'm not going to support it. The reality is, look at it, look at it. The video, it might change your perspective on how it's going to work. I hate to admit, I don't think cities, some people are right. I hate to admit that the 90%, actually, all the kids in areas in their jurisdictions, roundabouts are good. It reduces the impact, reduces the flow. I identified what, I wanted. So, and here we go, I'm going to improve the brand, but I'm not, that doesn't make sense. But they were all supportive of it. They said it helps traffic flow, they said, especially in the downtowns, it helps the traffic flow for more businesses to be seen. So many things, reduce, reduction in accidents. So, for me, right now, I'm still at 50/50, but I'm leaning towards more of a roundabout. Hate to say it, but at the end of the day, it has to make sense. Has to make sense.
Hi, Francisco.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Um, what is your day job?
Oh, thank you for asking. So, I think I've consulted for a long period of time. So I do, I do business evaluations, I strategically redevelop businesses. So I go ahead and look at analog scale and I say, "Okay, you need to work on your staff here, you need to work on your customer service here." I do evaluations for user forecast projections for businesses. I shouldn't say this, I think I, yeah, I don't know. It's not a lot of concrete jalapenos. So if you ever look at, anybody know Hacienda? Hacienda? Okay. So I actually develop a strategic plan for the local level for their revenue. That's the logo that you see right there, Hacienda? That's my logo. But also, also, I'm proud to say that they like my proposal so much, they actually put it through all their national businesses, our national CERs. So my logo, my logo is national, so it's awesome. So I do a lot of businesses, evaluations, but my nonprofit goal, not for the council, to be honest with you, it's not. My nonprofit goal is to do model initiatives for kids. Because I see there's such a need and I actually built a program, which I'm starting within the next probably six months. It's going to be a nonprofit, it's called Invisible Kid Courage to Succeed. And it teaches kids that they have value. So this is something that I'd like to do, this is not my nonprofit goal.
Okay, so you say you consult for businesses, so I'm assuming that the city council has something in their regulations that that business comes in for you.
Yes.
Submit a conflict of interest and step away.
Absolutely. Whenever, and I have done it time and time again, if there's ever been an issue, I repeat myself 100%. And furthermore, it says that the bylaws says if you make up a fine law, you have to play. And I'll be honest with you, I don't do many business here because a certain individual that people know destroyed my business. And they destroyed about 90% of my business at one point in time. I actually, when I got recalled, to be honest with you, I actually had to sell my life policy, it got so bad. So, it's crazy.
Because I have another question. You get two?
What?
Okay.
Answer it, you want.
So, and you can, you know, set me straight on this in my dear rumor however, but I've told that you have a city council Facebook page.
Yes.
However, you block people from it.
Uh, yes.
And you block people for opposing views?
No, 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 no. I'll give you a good example. And if we can have a good dialogue like we're having right now, let's have a good dialogue, that's fantastic. But when you're attacking individuals based on no merit and you keep on attacking the individual, does that really, does that really, does that justify that I should have discretion? Absolutely not. Because when it comes down to it, I don't have a one, I love this forum. I don't have a one-on-one conversation. So you understand my opinion because there's a lot of social media out there. I remember one time when I was a vice mayor, a long time ago, I don't, this is the first time I dressed really nice because I'm not dressing really nice, to be honest with you. But one time ago, I was at the mall and they said, "Captain Nurse is on drugs because he looks like he's homeless." So, you know, those types of things go out there and a business, I'll answer your question. In future answers, you get two correct or three answers? Yes, I get a lot of surfing individuals because of their, their mishates, mishate, honestly.
Ms. Rivera, a couple of questions.
Go.
One is, you kind of support the roundabouts. Is there some reason that the roundabout at 43 hasn't repaired in seven, eight months? And I know, I would tell you, half the roundabout at 43 belongs to the city, half belongs to the state. And a truck went through there and it tore it out. And I'm like, I drive to that road every day, 3:40.
I have to.
And I'm thinking, wait a minute, is our city so poor, we can't get that fixed back right away?
No.
That's why. We're going to put. Don't ask that.
No, that can't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Don't tell that to me.
So, I am mad too. And I'm going to take accountability for that, this is my issue. But I'm going to tell you one thing is, I was under the aspect that it was the Caltrans that supposed to take care of it. Then a person, a judge called me, a judge called me by the way. A person called me, said, "Hey, you hate your district. You don't do nothing about the roundabout, you don't fix it, you don't put a sign with the roundabout." I'm like, "What are you talking about? It's a Caltrans issue." So I said, he said, "No, I'm a part of the Caltrans board," whatever, blah, 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 blah. I said, "Okay, let me see the city, what the city manager says." Sure enough, it's our problem. And I barely talked to him about maybe a week ago. And I said, "If this doesn't get done, you're making me look bad because you're saying to everybody, it was the, you said to everybody, it was Caltrans and it was..." So I can be responsible for that, I do. But I'm going to tell you right now, within the next month, it's going to be fixed.
Okay, I can handle that. Second question, why is it our city stifles businesses that want to come in here like Ivy, Olive Garden, Tahoe Joe? And I know this for a fact.
You're right.
We stank, we stifle those kinds of businesses when, and I'm not saying we can't have other businesses, but we travel, this is what irritates me, we travel outside of our city to go to Visaya to eat at Olive Garden when we can have one here and people are dying, and I know for a fact, I've been here 69 years, people are dying to have those venues here. Our city council needs to bring those to our community.
I'm going to tell you, you're absolutely right, give her an applause for that, he's absolutely right. I'm going to tell you, point blank, if certain people get on the council, they're going to move it back to the old place. Because we have been fighting for zoning regulation. So, Tom Hitchens want to be a Costco, they're going to be a Costco. But Tom Hitchens wants to be a Walmart, to be a Dallmark. That's the issue. It's because we've been playing particular politics. I'm going to give you an example and the person that got me recalled, I fought against that issue. Is, and I'm not throwing every kind of bus, okay, I'm not. But the thing is. But the thing is, what is LME common? It's industrial, industrial. Where should a, uh, LME common be? An industrial park. But they're there in a plant area for businesses. I don't agree with that, okay? That being said, when we're looking at these issues, make sure that we're gonna be less regulation, I can say, I can vouch for our council, that we've been doing less regulation, we've been allowing more signage. People used to get fined for a hissing and a sign, a temporary sign, $200 or, or figure, how much was it? For the regular background? $30,000? What?
But doesn't the council?
You gotta have the microphone.
Okay.
You're already at three questions.
Come on, Richard!
But doesn't the council regulate and control our planning department?
Yes, and I'm gonna tell you right now, this council has, and it takes time for those regulations to change, and they're changing. But it's, if they are changing, I promise you, they're changing. Um, I'll tell you, I'll tell you point blank, and you can look, and I'll give you that information. When I was first on council in 2014, and then about 2016, there was a study that said, hey, uh, it's called the leakage study. We had over 200 and, what was it, 350 million dollars in leakage, whether it be apologists, whether it be French stores, whether it be uniting, because guess what? They were zoned in the area where they couldn't staff. But in this leadership year, we're the first one to say, "You want to buy a small store shirt, knock down, uh, knock down anymore?" Because it's at the mall, because we got rid of that elimination of that zone, so not anywhere, even for a square, uh, 125 square, thousand square feet that could be there. That's how you make a change. Because if this one's a grow, who am I to stop them and say no? Right? That's how you do it, and that's what we're doing. But it's, uh, it's progress, and we're making a lot of progress, we are.
Uh, I can give you a suggestion for anybody that wants to be a city council member when elected, bring Olive Garden, a lot of that.
Ah, there it is! I'm ready for some Olive Garden!
Hey, you're still up, man, go ahead. I think you're mind tied, can you hold on to this one?
You got it.
Alright. Just a second, I got John here with a question, I'll move on. I got time for about two more questions.
Alright. Give them to me, come on, guys.
I hate Francis.
Alright.
Hey, I'm gonna be a little tough on you right now.
Alright.
But it's a question, probably obvious to know, nobody's asked it. Um, you saw Diane Sharp Hasiak at, at the town hall?
Right.
Right? She said she was sorry a little bit, and then five minutes later, she did the same thing.
Right.
Alright, her temperament, her authoritarian position, she held herself is, is really not good, and it can't be good for a city council. So, when she stepped down, or you guys, I'm hiding when she wasn't the mayor anymore, then she wanted to be, put herself, voted herself the vice mayor, and then, I believe, Art voted against it? You voted for, you voted, who voted for me?
I voted against it, and I voted against it.
Okay, so I should be asking you this question. So, I want to know, and how did I ask you this? Well, this is a city council question, and obviously should be. But you know she's gonna come again, what's your position, what she does want to be mayor again?
You have to earn it. I believe you have to earn it. Because I'm gonna tell you, I was, I believe in my third year, when the whole Rust Courage group, I wanted to break that up, actually, but, um, the thing was, they actually wanted me to be the mayor at that time, because they were gonna oust Russ, and I was gonna be the mayor. But I said, "No." You gotta have a committee that's effective at that time, and I wasn't effective. Trust me, I would've messed that up big time. And so I didn't take it. So I believe, and also, I believe the citizenship vote was the mayor, and not the city council. Okay? I do that 100%. Because you wanna take accountability, that, that, you wanna take accountability, and you wanna run for the office, you wanna directly be accountable, not to the council, but to the people. Okay? And so, for me, if I, and also, I want term limits, I want this, every, if you wanna do two years or three years, you should do it, and then be off one. Two years, three years, and then off one. Okay? And so, for me, it's about earning, it's about the respect. I'm gonna tell you a little story. An individual told me, very prominent, old bunny here, so to speak, prominent, he's not gonna go on record and say this, but I was at an event at, uh, the, uh, what is it called, Carnegie Museum, and he came up to me, I'm like, ah, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna recall you, should get recalled again, I thought he was gonna say that. And he told me, he says, "Francis, can I tell you something?" I said, "Sure." I'm like, oh, shoot, sometimes something. And he says, uh, he says, "Can I tell you, you've been one of the most effective mayors that Hanford has had in a long time." I said, "Well, thank you." That's weird, but thank you. And so for me, it's, it's about leadership. If you're qualified for that leadership, then be in that role. Honestly, I wanna take that role one more time, because we're going great, there's a lot of things that we can do better, but we're doing good. The leadership right, right, how, how, the right we have right now, I think is okay. But I also believe it takes at least four years to be in that leadership role, it takes that long. So to your original question with Diane, do I think she's ready? And the answer is, no.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
What would you say as something that the city council could have done, or can do in the future, so that what happened at the North Star project doesn't happen again?
You know what? Once again, people gotta think when they're wrong. A lot of times, they blame it on somebody else, whatever. But I'm gonna admit, we were wrong, we were wrong, I'm gonna be honest. Is, I hate to say it, but if this was a bit, would've been Darryl Powell, we would've been, we would've been aware a year, I mean, a month, a month and a half before this even got to this point. Our city manager, honestly, wasn't effective on that, that time, he wasn't, I admit that. Because he was, this is the first time he's been in the city, as the city manager. So, for me, I admit, it was a mess up. But I'm gonna tell you right now, you think it's gonna be, I don't have a say, you think it's gonna be a mess up next time? No. Why? Because you guys are watching, you guys are gonna think this kind of, and now we'll know what we gotta do right the next time.
Closing, closing statement?
Okay. Honestly, like I said, I really believe this is gonna be my last term, I really wanna help the community, but at the end of the day, I've got other things I wanna do, I wanna help kids. Like I said, my program with something invisible kid is to help kids that they face adversity, you know, they're, they're facing so many things. And I'm gonna tell you, 90% of the problems with kids and adults is love. Give love. Right? Give love. And so my program is gonna be doing that. But as a city council member, as a city councilman, I'm just here to fight for the community, I'm getting nothing out of it, it's fine, I'm bucking up. And, uh, for me, it's about making an impact, it's gonna help future generations. When I see kids, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stake this for a fact, when people come up to me, um, when they come up to me, and they, they, uh, they, when they come up to me and talk about they had drug issues, and knowing that I'm making an impact, I'm getting rid of that cycle. You know, when you're getting rid of that cycle, when you're saying, hey, they come up to me at restaurants, they tuna's, and say, hey, I just wanna say you changed my life, and now I'm helping my kids, now I'm a part of my kid's life. That makes, to me, if I could save one person's life, I did my job as city council, okay? So for me, I live, my only legacy is, there's no legacy, because I'm gonna tell you right now, it's what we do now. People always ask me, "Are you happy that your, your signs everywhere, or your, what is that called? I don't know, uh, statue or whatever, I don't know what it's called, anyways, I don't care." But at the end of the day, with your plaque, or you have the plaque, I said, "No." I said, "'Cause in 70 years, you're never gonna know who Francis was." It's about what we do now, that makes the port, the most important impact. So I leave you this, if you wanna vote for me, please do. Check out, uh, remembranceforhanford.com, if you wanna invest in the, in my future, to help our future, please do. Thank you very much, very much.
Alright, Amanda, you can come up. This stage is yours.
Can you bring this, or?
Oh.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone, and thank you for coming to tonight's event. Allow me to formally introduce myself, some of you may know me, and some of you may not. I am Amanda Saltrey, I'm your current Hanford City Councilwoman for District Day. And last year, I was appointed in June, and since then, I have been running. I'm very thankful for this opportunity tonight, because I get to share my story and a little background on the move before I cover a fallacy. I'm married to an awesome man of faith, Amanda Saltrey. We just celebrated our 20th wedding anniversary this past August, and we have three beautiful girls together. To know and understand me is to know my values, my, and my core beliefs, which come from the Bible. My parents loved Jesus and taught my brother and I what it means to be a Christian by leading by example. Evan and I were the last to move to Hanford over a year to go from San Jose. What brought us here was the slow migration of immediate and extended family making their way as a result of the more enabled air station and local job opportunities. My brother found a job at the high school teaching, uh, job, and my father found employment down base. I've seen the changes Hanford has experienced over the past 20-plus years, and can understand where we've come from as a community, because that's how long, uh, since the early 90s, that's how long my family's migrated here, so I, I have come to know Hanford. I wanna share a little testimony with you, and this is important to know, because it allows you to understand how my experiences have molded me to become who I am, and to share how blessed I am that God has guided me through them. I've had a life with amazing experiences, opportunities, and met some incredible people. To truly appreciate the blessings and the good, you need to experience the contrast. And I've had my fair share of trials, which some of you have witnessed with me. I had three extremely difficult pregnancies. My second was so much so that it was strongly suggested I terminate the pregnancy for the sake of my health. That was never considered an option for our family. And after my second, doctors pleaded with me to not try for a third baby. After a three-year gap and terrific health, we prayed and put it in God's hands shortly after we were blessed with another pregnancy, but things didn't go well, and I was once again placed on bedrest. Doctors continually suggested an option to terminate the pregnancy, but my husband and I refused. Not once did we entertain that idea, and continued to put our faith in God. By the grace of God, our daughter and I... Our daughter and I pulled through, however, she was born with some challenges. We thought after our Penny was born, all would be well, but that was not the case. We quickly realized we needed to be around family, and what a welcome our family in Hanford was for us. Throughout our crisis, my family had asked for continual prayer on our behalf to the folks here in Hanford. So when we moved here, people got to meet the family that they were praying over. We soon plugged into the community, and our adopted church family surrounded us with support and love. And I joined the MOPs group at Glad Tidings and made awesome, awesome friends. I became active in the community because I fell in love with Hanford. It soon became clear that Hanford was where we wanted to plant our roots and raise our three girls. UCP and CPRC were an intricate part of our journey, and UCP continues to be near and dear to my heart. The first three years of my little Penny's life, she spent more time in the hospital than out. And the community came together to love and bless our family during the hardest time in our lives, and I will forever be grateful for the kindness that was shown to us. Over time, we started to get some answers with diagnosis, and learned how to manage the care for our daughter, and now by the grace of God, she's doing well. Life improved for Penny through services, prayer, and handling, and we haven't had an emergency for the past three years. She attends our local school in the district and continues to impact hearts and minds in our community. And I have such a heart for helping and serving, and it means so much to be able to give back and bless the community that blessed me. Being on council has given me an even greater platform to serve and have a greater impact. I've always had an interest in politics. I used to join political forums because I enjoyed the back and forth dialogue. Never did I ever think that I'd become a politician. I'm honest, I blend, and many might say that I'm not politically correct. So when COVID hit, I felt our First Amendment rights were being eroded away. I believe in our Constitution, and I love the United States of America that our forefathers built. I could not stand by and allow our liberties and freedom to be taken without a fight. So when our churches and small businesses were shut down, meanwhile, big box stores could stay open and receive fund reliefs, I became activated. I took to the streets and protested to keep our churches and small businesses open. I attended protest rallies, all in the name of God, liberty, and freedom. Thank you to Brett Beaumont for organizing some of these protests that I attended, and I saw Jeff Mora there, and Kalish Moro. Throughout the COVID experience, I saw the government gaining power without representation, and I saw a need to fight for local authority in smaller governments. This prompted me to become more active in our local politics. I started attending council meetings and found myself interested in all aspects of how a city was run. My passion for our parks led me to my first city council meeting years ago, when the city was considering replacing the aged rubber flooring at Freedom Park, they wanted to replace it with bark. Very glad that they did it. And that they replaced it with the rubber, as it was intended. I also attended meetings regarding the use of the 18 acres at Eden Valley. I hoped it would remain parkland, but the previous council had changed the zoning from parkland to residential, and I wanted to see it returned to parkland with a vision to create a large cohesive park. So when then District Day's council member announced his midterm retirement, I read about the appointment announcement to finish out the term in the Sentinel. During the appointment hearing, I was chosen to serve the last remainder of the year because of how I conveyed my heart for the city. I believe my heart for the city stood out. During the appointment process, I was no party preference. However, after witnessing the efforts and resources the Libertarian Party made towards maintaining and upholding our constitutional rights, against the draconian mandates that were forced on us, I decided to join their efforts against big government. When I received the appointment, I wanted to prove to District Day that I had their best interests. I wanted to be a voice for the community. I believe representatives should remain connected and in touch with the people. To best represent my community, I need to know and hear from them. So I started town hall meetings. I brought city directors under one roof and welcomed to the community to come together and ask questions in an open back and forth dialogue, and I continue to outreach to keep people informed. While on council, I voted to approve the position of Park Resource Officer and trucked to patrol our parks and keep them safe. Since joining the council, I made it a point to do ride-alongs with our daytime and night shift patrols and our hard team to better understand the challenges our city faces. I've also spent time volunteering and even went through training with our fire department to assess and understand their needs and challenges. In our family, we have a lot of military, law enforcement officers, and some firefighters, so I was brought up to respect and appreciate them. I was taught that they are true heroes that are willing to risk their lives for all of us, and I've passed that along to my girls. As a council member, I engage with all our departments through meetings, events, chats, and I often will just pop in and visit and see how they're doing, what their needs are, just to get to know them so that they're comfortable to come with to me, and so I could best represent them as well. A few months back, I saw the disconnect between organizations that deal with their homeless population. A few months back, I saw the disconnect between organizations that deal with their homeless population. To open up communications, I held a meeting of the minds with multiple other organizations as well as our city and the legislature together to discuss each strength and encourage collaboration. I've witnessed firsthand how cities need more than just housing for our homeless. We need more successful programs where we can help reduce the homeless by not only providing a bed, but a program to rehabilitate and get them back into the workforce. And for those with mental health, to get them the care they need and off the streets. The city manager and I went to Lodi to see an example of a successful program currently working in cities like Bantica, Stockton, and Lodi. Hanford is the center of King's County Services, and money is flowing from the Fed and state to provide housing-only bandings. Homeless are viewed by developers as big job creators, and some are making money off of this vulnerable population, exploiting these people for financial gain. At our last city council, we also voted, well, we, I'm sorry, we didn't vote, but we agreed that we were going to bring a study session to discuss tackling this homeless issue. And I am trying to bring something for the city to adopt, something similar to intercity action and Visalia Rescue Mission. These programs work. They're effective. And I would love to see our city adopt this model. To further my reach for the Valley, I fought to be appointed to the League of Cities Policy Committee. To provide a short background on the League of Cities, it is a collaboration of city council members throughout the state that meet throughout the year for training opportunities, valuable information, as well as collaboration. Policy committee appointments are scarce for the Valley. These are meetings that occur weekdays during business hours to discuss upcoming legislation that can directly impact Hanford and our Valley. It would be a disservice to lose the seat where I have had many constructive conversations with lobbyists, senators, and assemblymen on bills that are coming from the Capitol with a one-size-fits-all legislation. The North Star Project is an example of government overreach where the state superseded the city. I would have wanted public input since taxpayer funding was used from county and state. I would have wanted to see how far residents would have to walk or bus options to get to their weekly services. There's so many ideas the community could have brought to the table. This wasn't even an option for our community. And there was a lot of misinformation spreading about the project that I wanted to address. Keeping up with my town hall commitment for bridging the gap between the community and the city and against popular opinion, because my town halls are not popular with the staff and the other council, I set up the biggest town hall Hanford has ever seen and witnessed over seven hundred residents voice their concerns and questions on the North Star property. I also wanted the community to hear directly from those involved with the project to have the opportunity to clear up misconception on who was going to be living in the seventy-two units. I gave my district and the community a platform to have their voice heard that day. This community needs to hear early on my legislation is proposed that may affect us negatively, such as the recent AB 2011 bill that passed through which allows developers to bypass any zoning restrictions for low-income housing. I support local authority and can continue to be that voice for our community next year if elected. As an example, I voted to bring the Tefr bonds to the people to vote and have their say because that was the direction of my district, and I vote for the people. Another example is the resolution that we passed as a council last October to support local control. This resolution opposes state bills that undermine local authority and string lines the city's ability to come out in opposition of these bills. Now, a question was asked last week on the amount of time needed to do this job effectively. At the time of my appointment, I had a meeting with the retired councilman for District A. And he provided details on his day-to-day expectations. He informed me he didn't receive many calls or emails, and the community engagement was minimal. I would like to add, this was pre-North Star. If I were to ask for a raise of hands on how many of you became more active in city politics since the North Star Project was announced, I believe there would be quite a few hands. The council engagements are much different than they were years ago or even one year ago. When that project was announced, I was flooded with phone calls and meeting requests during the days, the nights, and weekends. I'm extremely fortunate to have such a strong support from my husband. His job allows me the opportunity to work full-time as your local representative. This is a role I dedicate my full time to, and I love it. It has been a pleasure and a privilege to serve my community. And I would like to continue and keep the positive momentum going because there is still so much to do, and I've just gotten started. Now, I do have some, uh, there were some questions asked last week, and I did get some answers for that if you guys would like to hear. So I know there was, uh, I'll just read off, the fiscal responsibility. We adopted Resolution Number Twenty-two dash twenty R, which implements a reserve and pension funding policy for the city of Hanford, thereby setting the general fund reserve at thirty-five percent of the general fund operating budget, fully funding liability and workers' compensation funds and directing the staff to establish a one-fifteen trust to be funded by pension savings and used to pay future pension obligations. We approved the issuance of thirty million dollars in pension obligation bonds to prepay the city's unfounded accrued liability on pensions. The pension prepayment will save the city seven point four million over the next ten years and be used to pay the future pension costs. This is going to prevent us from going bankrupt as a city. This is the kind of future thinking, long-term thinking that this council has done. We accepted the five-one-twenty-one audit, which recognized a four-point-two surplus that went towards fully funding the city's emergency reserves, as Councilman Maris pointed out. City's emergency reserves, so the FY twenty-one surplus included no ARPA funding. It's important to remember that the council also adopted Number Twenty-dash-twenty-nine establishing emergency reserve policies and requiring the city manager to present council with a general fund balance budget. This is very important when cities try to argue that the manager is not giving Santa council options. Um, what? There was also a mention of the graffiti. So in response to the graffiti policy that was brought up or the question, uh, we have, the city has a dedicated position, Community Enhancement Officer, to address graffiti, abandoned shopping carts, and other related issues in the community. Citizens can report graffiti on the city's website, and that position responds to complaints of graffiti on all public property and in the city's right of way. Cities are precluded from utilizing resources to address graffiti on private property if that would be considered a gift of public funds, and that would be illegal. Also, on the People's Ditch, when the Class One Trails was brought up, our director, Brian Albert, has had many meetings with the People's Ditch representatives regarding the proposed trail. And at one of them, uh, they're, they support the project as the maintenance of the area would fall to the city and not to their agency. So they are supportive of the project.
You ready for some question and answers? Well, I'll give you the same question I've given every other candidate or candidate. Uh, what is your position on the roundabouts? Uh, how do you feel about the money being spent on? And, um, how do you think your vote comes up?
So this is simple for me. I've always stated that I vote with the people, so if you guys want it, you got it. If you don't, I won't vote yes. I'll vote no.
Fair enough. Uh, also, you talked about the homeless and the, uh, some ideas with the homeless. If you were in charge of cleaning up the homeless program for the homeless in Hanford, or assisting, I shouldn't say clean up, but assisting with the homeless, what would your number one priority be to make that happen?
Well, first of all, we need to adopt a model. So that's step one. Step two is to implement it. So we have to start directing the funding. Or if we bring the models such as Visalia Rescue Mission, they're one hundred percent off of donations. They don't use any government funding, which I love. But we need to have the location established, which is tricky. And I too like the COS, the old COS building. I like that site. So working, uh, with the property owner is key. If you guys know him, give him a little nudge. And then just bringing all the different organizations together so that we partner up, we collaborate, so that we're pulling all our resources and effort together so we have an actual impact. And I've been working on that. I've been talking with a lot of the different organizations, and they seem to, to be on board with where my vision.
I tend to agree with the portion where you say private funding would be good because sometimes that big government strings attached aren't worth it to our community, or we end up suffering more by taking the money. So I agree with that. I'm gonna open the questions up to the audience. If you would like to pull out of the, or you've got a microphone.
Oh, yes.
How are you so comfortable?
I don't know.
Can I hold here for the audience? For the base of the audience.
Nina, I would ask you about the, you mentioned something about, um, houses that have been made for homeless, something that I can do. I know anybody by home gardens. And on ten W, there's a lot of houses that were recently, that were slightly changed. Those houses are taken care by the government. Governments may need a plan for the homeless for supply.
I believe you're talking about, uh, the, like King's Gospel, the government has a little, the little projects.
There are a lot of houses, twelve houses, small two-family houses, and I think that is going to be for the homeless. And my first is, that is down by the government or private.
It's a private organization. I believe there's government funding.
Kate, can you repeat the question for the mic, Amanda, just so it's on?
So there, there's some tiny houses over by the home garden in ten and that she was asking if it's a government or if it's private. And it's, it's a private organization that's doing that.
Very good. Questions? All right. Coming to you, Mike.
Ms. Saltrey, how are you going to find out from the community whether they like or dislike the roundabouts?
So he asked, how am I going to find out from the community? Well, I'm in the community. I've actually been canvassing. So I'm actually door knocking on every house, and that is one of the questions that comes up. And so I, I've heard from a lot of the community about how they feel about it. However, we are going to have a study session that's coming up where everyone has the opportunity to come out to hear what we hear. There's going to be a visual, so there will be a three-D video that will show the, the roundabouts as an option and also the traffic lights as an option. So you're going to see cars going through and people walking through. And so we'll get to see what that'll look like, and people have the opportunity to speak.
Do we have a date on that yet?
We do not have a date on that.
Are the roundabouts engraved in stone?
No. So...
Okay, one moment, one moment.
Oh, sorry.
But, uh, is there only going to be two options, a roundabout and a stoplight? Is that it? Two options?
So, yes, the, well, it's going to be replacing where the stoplights are on, was that Downey? So that, that traffic light is going out. It needs to be replaced. So it's a matter of, do we replace it with a traffic light or a roundabout? And the, so the project that we're doing, the four-point-four million is for the entire project to beautify downtown. It's a, it's for infrastructure. Everything's going to get taken care of in there when they do either the traffic lights or the roundabout. sidewalks are going to get ripped up and need to be replaced. So this is going to affect everything. So the four-point-four million is not for the roundabouts. Only a small portion, well, three hundred thousand would be for the roundabouts or traffic lights.
I've been reading, you know, reading, and using my newspaper. Newspaper and speaking to, uh, you know, going to the meetings. And, uh, I'm going to use a phrase that the big politicians use, you know. It seems like these two projects got shut down because I, I didn't know about it until after the fact, you know. I mean, when did you guys know about it? I mean, when did you let the community know? And then tell you instead, you know, it seems like you got far along on that roundabout thing. That's what it seems to me is like. You know, both of you guys are saying, ah, you know, if you're not in the community, yes or no. I mean, but I want to ask you, you have a canvas. So what's, what's the feeling out there, you know? I mean, I mean, you're canvassing, but are you taking that, you know, marking down, you know, one for yay, one for nay? You know, I want to know what it is. I want to know what you're saying.
So far, as I am canvassing, I'm definitely hearing a no. But hopefully people will still come out to our study session and, and see and hear the statistics and the facts that go through. And the study session, we will not be voting then, whether we do the roundabouts or the traffic lights. It will then go to a future agenda. And so you still have the opportunity to approach us as a council and tell us how you feel about it. And it's not a done deal. This isn't something we're hiding or slipping in. This is something that's been talked about quite a bit. And our mayor came out, I don't know how long ago, a few months ago, and spoke for two hours on the roundabouts. So this is definitely something that we are trying to inform the community on and get community involvement. Uh, I especially have been pushing for community involvement. So does that answer your question?
I, I will say this, uh, the mayor did come out and speak with us, like Amanda said, for two hours. And I think the board, the city council, has been transparent to try to inform us about councils. That doesn't mean I agree with them, but I will say that the city council has been working with us to, um, inform us specifically about what it's about, will provide all documents. The mayor came out. So I don't think in this case, I can sit, I, I must say that. I don't, I think they're being transparent about what's going on with the roundabouts. Again, I don't agree with them, but I don't like to hear people say that it's not transparent or that they're, uh, not coming forward with information because that has not been the case in my eyes. That's it.
Yeah, and again, it's, there's been no vote whether or not we do the roundabouts or traffic lights. So that, that has not been decided. So there will be a second study session because we did have one, and... And then you, as a community, have the opportunity to come talk to us. Come bring it. Let us know how you feel. Let us know, yes, I want it, or no, I don't. And I vote with the community. You guys don't want it? Okay, that's my vote, no.
Okay, I have two questions. So I'm sort of new to Hanford. I moved here 2018. Whereas from Toll House, you have a roundabout. Have you factored in the continual repair of the roundabout? It gets ran over up there all the time. Looks just like the one over by Costco. And have you guys factored that into the cost of it? Because, I mean, you're gonna have to repair it quite often.
That's a good question. I don't have that answer. But that is a question that I can bring up during the study session.
My second question is with the homeless situation. How come there's not a new plan in place? Your, I mean, it's been getting worse year over year. And, I mean, it looks like the current plan is not working. Oh, sorry, the homeless situation? For several years now, I've seen, you know, it get worse and worse and worse. How come it's taken so many years for a new plan to be put in place? And you guys talked about you guys thinking about a plan. When are we gonna just step forward and make a plan and put it into action?
So before I got on the council, which was last June I was appointed, I actually was volunteering with inner-city action. And back then, we were trying to bring this into the city of Hanford. There was a lot of pushback. And as soon as I was appointed, that was like one of my top issues. Like, we gotta get this in, we gotta get this in. And it's a matter of finding the right place. And at the time, I really wanted the old COS. But there's some other locations that I think would be good. But it's working with the property owners, working with the zoning, bringing the organization in and getting it all approved and finding the right legal method of bringing them in. So things do not happen overnight. But we are working for that. And I am pushing hard for it. And do see the need. It's not something that I'm going to, and I know the council's not as well. And our city manager has been on board. And he's also been trying and working with our attorney and trying to push this group faster than government only works. So, but we do see the need. And I will say that Hanford, we are the hub of King's County. This is good in its bed. The downfall of that is, where's the county jail? The county jail's here, in Hanford. So when you have other cities, like Abenol, and they arrest someone, they don't have holding cells there. The other cities don't have holding cells. So when they arrest someone, they have to bring it to Hanford. Bring them, sorry, to Hanford. And by the, it's a two-hour drive. So they drop them off, they do the paperwork, and then they take off. Then the people are released. How do they get back home? So they now may become Hanford residents. And we have a lot of services here. We have a lot of services that do handouts. It makes it very convenient for people to continue living the lifestyle and the choice of remaining on the streets, which is something I brought up in my meeting with the other organizations. We can't just do handouts. We have to have programs. So if you wanna feed people that are living off the streets, let's do it in a new capacity where they have to go into this program in order to get fed. And they can't just be living on the streets. So there's a lot of changes that I'm trying to bring forward.
This is not directed towards you, but I think the money would be well spent to have a employee bust them back to where they came from, right?
We, as the work team that we do have is our Hanford Police Task Force, they actually do send a lot of them home. We've sent people as far as New York and Pennsylvania. Now legally, we can't force them to leave because if they don't wanna go, we can't force them. But if we do have a program in place where we have beds for them, now it makes it illegal for them to remain on the streets. And that's what we need to do. We need to get beds. But I want it to be in a program where it's not just continually government assistance. We need to have these people transformed so they become whole. And then they leave out of the program whole and back in the workforce and contributing back to society, not continuing to be on government assistance and on our taxpayers' side.
Has there been any consideration given to shifting the penalties for panhandling? Maybe if it's not so lucrative to be outside of Target or Walmart, maybe they'll move on.
You know, I don't know if that came up. I don't have that answer. But that is something to bring up and find out. I don't know, do you know?
No, you know, but you know, obviously, law mandates if you're gonna give a, if you're gonna pay the person to do the rent, pay $99, homeless can't afford to pay anyways. So it'd be easier.
I got a question. What's the cost of a program for the homeless?
Well, it depends on if we adopt the model that Vaisalia has. There's no cost to the city. It's no taxpayers dying. It's all donations.
What's the cost for a handout?
It's, there's no cost for anything.
He would be tied to donations. The model she was talking about would be probably...
I was talking about the purchase of COS. What's gonna cost the city? Nothing?
The organization pays for themselves.
So he's asking now if we move forward and purchase the COS building, what would that cost?
We wouldn't purchase it. The city wouldn't purchase it. I'm working with them to try to organize it, make the arrangements. But, because we wanna partner with them. But we wouldn't purchase the property. That would be between the organization and the property owner. And I think it would be a lease deal. Now, if we did do with ICA, there is a partnership with the city. They do private donations and government funding, which they actually go after grants and stuff. They don't have those strings attached. And so then it would be... I don't know that the city would still have to pay. It would come out of our general funds.
All right, we've got time for that. Two more questions.
Without discussion with the city of Hanford as part of the King's Tolarian Homeless Coalition?
Yes.
And they receive money for both counties? And we have been allocated money for the project on... What's the name of it? Monchamp Sun?
Sunrise Apartments.
Okay, that's part of Hanford. We get credit. And the one that the lady was talking about on 10th Avenue, we put in a $200,000 sewer line, okay? Now, they can't give you money unless you have a project. And you're talking about a project at COS?
Yeah.
If it's prepared and it's submitted, you're entitled to some of the money from King's Tolarian, which comes from the state with a very purpose of assisting people that are homeless. So there is state money available. You need to have a plan. That means you have a site, you have how it's been operating. That's who we're, who we're dealing with, you know, people.
Yeah, city, BG, funding.
And by the way, that's not an argument.
He was in town, you know, by the way.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi.
You said town halls. You're a fan of town halls. Now, prior to North Star, how many town halls did you have?
Three.
Three? Okay. The Hero Park, I think it's called the Hero Park, nine and a quarter?
Yeah, Hero's Park.
Where's that money coming from?
That's grant funds.
All of it?
No, not all of it, but it's grant funding. It's gonna be done in phases. That also was prior to me coming on. I didn't have a say in that.
What's your vision for the 18 acres that hit the mountain?
So I wanna see one cohesive park. I would like to have community input. So we would go out there and host presentations and have people... Brad Albert's done this, and he did it with the Hero's Park. So something very similar, the same thing, where everybody would come out and we would say, this is, these are the different phases and the different options we could do. And people just go and they put little stickers on what they wanna see done. So whatever has on those stickers is like, this is what the community wants. And I know one thing that I would like to see is I wanna see that basin that we have, the ponds. It's small. I would love to see a lake. And then let's put fish in there. Let's go fishing. And maybe we can have fishing tournaments and put a walking path around it so we can actually enjoy it. So that's one of the things that I would kind of push for. But there's, you know, we have so much space. There's so much we could do. And I wanna see, we don't have a lot of basketball courts. We don't have any tennis courts. People want people's courts. Like, let's bring it, let's bring it on. I wanna see people being active. These are free activities.
How about a solar-covered walking track?
I'm sorry?
A walking track.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no place to walk. It's 110. I mean, you could have it covered with solar panels. It creates energy as well.
Then use our idea that we want people driving.
So that's one idea. And then the pathway from going down the people's ditch? No, bad idea. Bad idea. Bad idea.
Do you like them?
Amanda, I've been to a couple of meetings with the city council. One of them I went to, our city manager and our attorney made a comment along with our city council said, the city of Hanford cannot control the growth of our city because of infrastructure, the water, the electric, the sewer, streets.
They're talking about moratoriums?
Moratoriums. Our city council made a comment, we cannot do a moratorium on growth in our city. At what point are we gonna let people from the outside come into our city? I know everybody wants to buy into Hanford because it's cheaper than living in LA and San Francisco. But our city council needs to take a step and say, let's put a moratorium on growth so we can control the amount of water that we're using because there's less water. We don't have adequate fire department. We don't have adequate police department. We don't have the water. But yeah, we keep building homes. At what point do we stop?
Richard, you're a pre-teen supplier. I don't know if you heard, but that was one of the things that I said. I said, let's put a moratorium on building because we don't have the infrastructure to support it. We need to have, we need to have more schools before we build more houses. We need to have the wells. Right now, we're down three wells. Two are going up, but we don't have enough. I don't believe we have enough water. I want our pressures really low. It should get better with some of the wells that are going up. But yeah, before we start building and expanding, let's take care of the needs that we currently have. Also, where are the jobs? Where are all these people gonna work? So let's bring in more businesses. Let's fix the roads. Let's take care of the infrastructure before we start expanding and bringing in more people in. So I'm with you on that. But it is illegal to put a moratorium.
Is it illegal?
It's illegal.
You don't call it a moratorium. Hey, let's move on to the next question because I'm almost out of time. But I will tell you that if you build an all-important, the people can work there.
Amanda, we're hearing things about the old courthouse and what's gonna happen with that. Can you shed some light on the courthouse in sale or lease or...
It's not for sale. We put it in surplus. There's, we put it on surplus so that if someone is interested, they can either lease it or purchase it. But there's not activity currently.
Oh, Stephen. You always had questions, but since it's related, I'm gonna get to it.
Uh-oh.
So I honestly believe that impact fees sometimes can be crazy. But this is devil's advocate. People are talking about, you know, stopping those. You can get crazy with impact fees to stop it. So in other words, if a developer wants to come and they wanna pay the crazy impact fees, then those funds can be used then to play a spur. It's double-edged sword, but you could slow it down by doing that.
Amen.
And so we had a, we had a goal-setting session earlier in the year. And that was one of my top goals, was to raise the impact fees and to put more responsibility on the developers. So I'm actually trying to move in more of the direction of an EISF, which brings, pays for more of the services and puts a lot on the developers and less on the city. So it's more like user fees type. So that is actually the direction that we are moving. And that was one of my top goals.
I would assume with the governor's direction, there's limitations on what those impact fees can be used for and a percentage of... My understanding is they have to go specifically for certain services. So mine, I'll be able to price them out of a move into our lovely town.
But I also want... I wanna add that a lot of the projects that you see that are going up, these were pre-approved, pre-planned. Like, I mean, the Samuel King ones that are going up right now, that was like from the early 2000s. Like, these take years of planning. And we're now seeing the result. So it's, it's what it is.
Can you give a closing statement?
I really, I love Hanford. I love my community. I've loved serving you guys. I wanna continue to be the voice for the people because really, like, being a representative, I'm a public servant. And what that means is I'm here to serve you guys, serve the community. And it's been such a priority for me to actually represent the people, which is why I do my town hall and which is why I come to the meetings. And I take all my phone calls, I take the emails, I respond because I'm here for you guys. I wanna know you. I want you to know who's representing you so that I can be your voice. That's been my priority. I'm totally dedicated to this position. And so please, if you would allow me to continue to work for you, it would be my honor. So come this November, please keep in mind, Amanda Saltrey, 2022.
I want to thank Amanda and Francisco for coming out. I appreciate you guys participating in the town hall today. It was part three of a three-part series of town halls for these Hanford City Council candidates and incumbents. If you haven't, if you didn't catch part one or part two, it's available on our Facebook page. So it's there. What I wanna talk about, though, real quick, is our involvement as citizens. All right, we complain about, well, you know, things were done in secrecy or things were talked about. A lot of times they're talking about, no one's there to listen. So I try real hard to make every city council meeting now, and that hasn't been always the case. And things have opened our eyes. But you have to participate in the process. You have to be involved when they want input. You have to be at those city council meetings, at those county board supervisors, at those, whatever meetings are available to be at. If you have interest, you can't complain after it's done. If there's the availability for you to go speak about it, then that's your duty as a citizen of Hanford. If you want Hanford to improve and you want your vision to move forward, then you also have to put some time in. That's our job as concerned citizens. No one's gonna do it for us. We elect people to make decisions based upon our best interests. But make sure that your best interests are actually being followed out for those people that are elected. I wanna thank the current city council for working with us, coming out... coming out to speak to us and taking phone calls and letting us be part of that process. And I'm sure that some of the candidates that they're elected, that'll continue also. But they have a job and we have a job. So make sure, if you're gonna hold them accountable, hold us accountable to do our jobs and go out and speak when those things come up. All right, thank you. Very good. Next week, we will have Loopy Gia from County Rich Shore come to speak about the elections, the upcoming elections. He's gonna give us some updates about what King's County is doing. Also, we have the Canine Foundation, Hanford PD Canine Foundation, come out to do a little small talking also. We will be at Oktoberfest, October 15th, during the Canine Foundation's fundraiser. All right, so we will have 1776 booth there. Let me serve you over here, come by. All right, thank you.